Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to March 11th work session. I hope everybody's having a good week and washing your hands.
Okay.
And all that good stuff. Um, at this time, we'd like to discuss the school calendars. Um, Mrs. Renee Dowdy.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Matt Lutz.
So we have initiated our survey for staff and for parents. That survey runs until this Friday. We're going to cut off the collection of data. But what you had before you in tiny print, I apologize, but I did want to try and get it all on one page and not make it so run on. You couldn't tell and follow the stream of comments. What you had before you was just feedback as of today's date on the calendars so that you can kind of...
Oh.
Just kidding.
That's normally my...
So that you can kind of peruse the comments.
I'm sorry for cutting it. Yeah, he said, "We say..."
Okay. Go ahead. No, it's okay. Um, feedback on the K-8 calendar, feedback on the high school calendar, and feedback on the JPK calendar. Your calendars, I believe, are that's put in your folders. They're also linked to the, um, web up there. So that's the, those are the calendar drafts in which parents and staff are providing this feedback. I think if you kind of overlook through the comments, vast majority of them in full support. Really appreciated the fact that we tried to line up the workdays all together so parents didn't have to juggle, "Oh, this is the high school calendar, but my K-8 kid has a day off in the middle of the week." It was also good feedback about those middle-of-the-week days being moved to Fridays so it doesn't disrupt the flow of the middle of the week and parents think it's a better option for them in making arrangements on either a Friday or a Monday. So again, appreciated that. Um, there are some comments just questioning again, like, why early release days for K-8? Why early release days for the high school? Of course, the last question I continue to put out there in hopes that maybe it will bite is the calendar flexibility and would you be interested again? And we started school a little bit earlier, got out a little bit earlier. So again, that's kind of on there, um, getting their feedback. The majority, it's like 53% right now are in support. Another like 20% say they would like more information and then about 30% are saying, "No, I'm not interested in that right now." So I still think the majority swing to the positive side of looking at calendar flexibility. If we can make that happen, um, we'll see. I think you're hearing more, if you're paying attention in this state, there are more school districts moving to that calendar and saying they're year-round or adopting a traditional, I mean, or adopting an actual year-round calendar with fall break and spring break and those types of things in there. Um, again, I felt good about the feedback that we've received thus far.
Is that what Elizabeth City Pass, the town's doing now? Because I've seen that they were going to try to get an earlier start.
So they're still gonna, they're gonna look to modify that first semester for them. Call themselves, I guess, the year-round schedule, like we said some schools are gonna do. Um, start a little bit earlier, finish up before exams, before Christmas break, and then go afterwards. Um, both them and Craven County have jumped to do that. I think some of the negative feedback that's happened is it's just been such a quick decision and turnaround for parents. So there's been a lot of pushback in those LEAs because they're not giving parents enough notice to say, "Hey, we've already got all this vacation planned and now you're just telling us this and it's already happening." I think everybody's vacation plans are changing a little bit right now. So again, I would just say that if we go to do that, we give that full amount of time of notice so that everybody can plan that summer. They get shortened and it does, we don't interfere with those plans, whether it's staff or families.
Doesn't really make sense to occasionally abandon before Christmas? So you're saying if we did try to go down that path, we would likely do it a year in advance with the notification?
I think it would be beneficial for us to do it that way.
So by when would you suggest?
So I think if we adopt these calendars for this year, we've put out that we are exploring that option and start having that conversation with parents for the 2021, 21, 22 school year, I would say that I would think you do that before Christmas of this coming year. If not, you know, early in the fall of this coming school year.
Before they start making vacations.
That's right.
I know we've talked about it before, but, you know, we talked about it last year and it didn't go through. But what about early release, like a couple of early releases each month for our elementary and middle school teachers? Did you explore that?
Yeah, and you'll notice in that K-8 calendar, so when Matt and I talked about developing this calendar, um, instead of those middle-of-the-day workdays that we had had in there kind of planning, that's what we really wanted to try to do. So you see more yellow on this calendar than any previous calendars before with those early-release Fridays. And trying to give, now some of them are the standard ones. The Friday before Memorial Day, we always have as an early-release day for all of our schools. But we did want to try to sprinkle in, like in February, these two early-release days have never been there before. And they would line up more with our schedule of the high school. So again, parents are dealing with it across the board, not just at a high school level or a secondary level. Um, so we did look to sprinkle some more of those in there. We've had discussion, for example, one of the feedbacks you'll notice is about this May workday in the middle here. And it was because, again, we've got the hours in there, so we put an extra workday in there. But we could take this optional workday here and split it into two early-release days again and add those two early-release days. That's why we wanted feedback, so that we could take that and then say, "All right, there seems to be some conjecture about this optional workday in May," which, you know, if there's an election or something that we had messed up last year. Taking this optional workday, again, sprinkling two early-release days in somewhere else in the calendar to do that.
I just wonder what the teachers think. What would benefit them more?
Well, I think in the feedback, you'll see some of the, some of the comments are, "We wish we had more early-release days like the high schools do." Um, then you have others that say, "We don't like early-release days." So it's just, it's, it's a little bit of both.
I, I know that, you know, every Friday, like the high schools have, is not conducive for the elementary, but, um, and middle. But I would think two a month would be very beneficial.
And I would have to rely on elementary folks, you know, in the buildings to say, "Is it a disruption? Do we think it would look better that way?" Again, I think that, that May optional workday would be a perfect opportunity to split it and then put in two more somewhere in the calendar if it's not conducive being where it is right now.
We were trying to ease into that a bit, Janet, with that in mind. That's the two in February, one in March. I think we also put an extra one.
Sorry, I closed.
Before the start of the school year, or, uh, before the new year. Um, feel pretty comfortable on moving to those half-days and still getting good production and focus around what we need to work on. Felt comfortable just moving our P-Day days out of the Wednesdays to the Fridays or the Mondays. Our attendance has been outstanding and our engagement with our staff's been great. So, um, I would like to continue to explore that. We're kind of easing into it right now. Um, I would, I think our teachers would like that too, or your suggestion as far as I can, every other.
I know we spend a lot of time collecting data, but then you have to have time to analyze that data and you have to have time to develop a plan on how, what you're going to do with that data. So, and it's, I know it's hard to get done in a 45-minute planning period each day with all the other responsibilities.
Well, I think we've tried to be strategic about when it doesn't have a significant impact on parents because for elementary students, you are thinking about childcare. You have every other Friday off and I'm a working parent. I've got to figure out what to do with my kid on those half-day Fridays.
Do we?
And we have programs, but they're expensive.
Well, do we have the YMCA at every school? What schools?
It's at Mayock Elementary School, Shawboro, and somewhere downtown.
Right, right.
We bus to, Central buses to the YMCA.
You do?
So it's not a burger for us, then we just have it at the line.
But it's costly.
It's your top priority.
Yeah, I don't mean to say it, but as a working parent, like, that's an expense that would be a burden for us to have to pick up and put on parents to...
Does the YMCA pay us to use their schools for childcare?
No.
Nope.
One of the things that we mentioned, um, the, um, changing our schedule, um, and worrying about how soon we would do it. A lot of people, if they rent cottages at the beach, let's just say that, they book a year in advance. So if their vacation is August the 15th or whatever, then they may book and get some kind of discount-type situation for the following year. So we may need to make some of that, um, decisions prior to, um, the summer.
Yeah, we have a lot of people in my office. We have a sales department and a rental department, weekly rentals. And the moment they leave, they book for the coming year because they're afraid, if it's a cottage that they love, they're afraid somebody else will come in and book it. So they book it for that same time.
So we might...
So then that would be something we would have to decide this summer. It affects for the following summer.
I thought you were talking about a year and a half out from December, though.
Yeah, but we need, that's what I'm saying. If they, if they go to vacation in August, the fifteenth, let's just say, I'm trailing, August 15th.
She was saying six months from December. Did you start talking about it now, but you finalize the calendar in December? It starts in July, August.
Yeah, but it finalizes in December of 2020 for the 21, 22 year.
But some people make their plans in August 2020.
Well, I mean, okay.
That's what they're saying.
And, and, I mean, if we get in three years' notice, we still probably impact someone's plan.
Well, yeah, but, I know, I did it.
I think we're calling it down by giving them a year and a half, though.
They're talking about the incentive piece, that when you have a cottage, you get the same week to file.
When you rent a cottage and it's the cottage you like and you're...
Yes, ma'am.
In 2020, August 15th, let's just say that date, and I like that, then I'm gonna say, "Okay, I want it for that same week next year." A lot of them give you a little incentive to book it early. So they would already be in a situation where, "Oh, well, now we're gonna start school sooner." So I think we need to, go ahead and, we're gonna do it.
Just for the, the audience out here, in case you don't know, to respond to Ms. Rose's question, um, does the Y pay for use of the schools for the after-school programs? The YMCA is called a partner, a partner agency with the school district and we get, um, we get some staff, um, memberships, I think, for teachers of the year.
And some student scholarships.
And some student scholarships. Then you get the kindergarten swimming program.
Yeah, swimming program.
Yeah, so if we have agencies that, that give back to the district or even individuals, uh, they give back to the district at a certain level, um, they will get rent-free use of facilities in exchange for whatever they're providing to the school district. So the YMCA is one of those. Uh, we don't just say, "Hey, run your after-school program." Uh, you know, they, they give some in-kind services back to the district.
But I, you know, in speaking to that, Mark, I wonder if the schools that we do not have that, if, if we could give some sort of an incentive. Do we have any local daycares anymore? I think a lot of them went out of business when the Y took over. But, you know, if we could give an incentive to some licensed individuals to provide daycare at the schools on early-release days, I don't know.
Why don't we just keep school open? And then we don't have to figure it out? And then the parents don't face this challenge? And we don't have to give an incentive or not an incentive? Or people gotta pay for something, this and that? I mean, what are we doing? Why don't we just keep the school open? And then when it's closed, it's closed. The half-day costs you more, costs the parent more, costs the school system more if we give incentives. Not a fan of that half-day.
I see the concern for the, for the daycare, I do. But I also see the benefits of teachers having adequate planning time.
You get somebody that works a regular full-time job, that is a single parent, and you put this early-release August, early-release September, early-release October, December, in addition to all the other days that got off in December and all the holidays in November. Early-release twice in February, early-release again in March, all on Fridays. Early-release in April, early-release in May. Single parent trying to hold down a job. Makes it tough. That's where I'm at with it.
So I think, just to reiterate, about four of those early-release days are new. The other ones have been in our calendar longstanding. The Fridays, the two Fridays in August when we start, before, when traffic is still heavy, we've always taken those Fridays as early-release days.
Yes, ma'am. I was just trying to paint the picture throughout the year. I wasn't saying you put them all in there. I was showing the totality of the life of the parent and the employee faced with a four- to half-day work week. Otherwise, they're gonna have to be working on the weekends to make up for it and they're still having to face with this, uh, uh, situation as well. And I recognize we're not here to provide daycare, all right? That's why I'm not for the incentive. But I do think that we are gonna get less paid for our buck increasingly. And, and, and I'm concerned about it and I think it makes a hardship. And, um, particularly for these, uh, parents in, uh, this age bracket. And I'm not, I'm not a fan of it all.
Okay, any other discussion?
So we should have calendars ready to adopt at the next four weeks.
Sounds good. All right. Um, next, we have the 90% and 95% discussion.
This is just, uh, reviewing where we were. Uh, we had a, a draft, um, procedure, administrative guideline, board policy, whatever you want to call it for, what happens when we hit 90%, what happens when we hit 95% capacity. Um, to date, I haven't received, um, any feedback. And so if the board, uh, is, is comfortable with the, the information we presented so far, we'll go ahead and formalize it and make it look like a policy or administrative guideline instead of an email. Uh, and, uh, and then we'll be ready to communicate it out to the, uh, the commissioners and the community on the, the steps we're taking.
I'm all for that, sounds good. Any other discussion?
The other piece, uh, well, it's the next item. Um, you want to announce it, then I'll...
Sure, Policy 4150, who was on it?
This is the other one that I was waiting some direction on. Uh, again, this is the policy that we borrowed from Wake County. Um, they have an expanded version of, of our 4150 and they have about five or six areas that might be things for us to consider. Um, letter A talks about, um, setting frameworks and timelines for, um, setting school boundaries. Uh, and so as you start to consider possibly changing boundaries because of, um, buildings that are over capacity, they say that they review the data, um, in, in December and by January, they say like, "Yes, we're gonna change the boundaries." And then they look at options and they finalize everything by April the 1st. Uh, if you would want to get that formal with that process, those are the first two paragraphs on the top of, of page one. The bottom of page one starts the, the item that caught my eye because it's triggered by upcoming developments. And so you look on the top of page two, small letter A. It says that the board has an option of creating what they call alternative school assignments. So, in short, just to give you an example, um, last August, there's a field that was harvesting corn. Uh, and, uh, this coming August, they're, they're breaking ground and they're starting to put up houses. As those houses would get finished throughout the school year, if you designated an alternative, um, school, then if the school of that neighborhood goes over capacity, then those new houses, as they get built, would automatically get triggered to the alternate school. So if you want to use our north end, as new buildings are being built in the Moyack area, if you say enough's enough, 110% capacity is, is plenty, then any house that gets built, if you said they go to Shawboro, uh, then those people, they don't have to do anything different. They show up at the registration office. Registration office knows that you've designated that neighborhood or that development to go to the alternate school. And so for that whole school year, any house that's built in that development triggers to the secondary school rather than the neighborhood school.
Well, I know a lot of people don't, don't register their child till the final hour. Who is gonna disclose to the, the buyers of these homes? Whose responsibility, responsibility is it? Is it the homeowner or the school or the developer?
I'm not sure it'll be the developer. I'd probably pay it out to the realtor.
Always. It's always her fault.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, no, if, if, if they were, let's say they were told one thing when they were purchasing the house.
Yeah.
When they, when they came over here to registration, they, they would be informed of, of the temporary. These things are temporary until you make them permanent. Uh, and so that's what this is. This gives you a year to see how many new houses are built. If the, the neighborhood school could handle a few houses, then the next year, you could put those people back in their neighborhood school, which is the one that the realtor told them, you know, the house we're sitting in to begin with.
Well, we kind of know those subdivisions that we would want to do that in because we want it to be closer to the alternative school rather than farther away. So can't we notify the realtors or the, you know, and say, "This, you need to disclose this"?
And it could be an active posting on our, our main website page, too.
Right, or, you know, until 2021, 22, or 22, 23 school year, you, your child will be assigned to this school.
Right, and that's what this policy says. It's for one school year. And then again, they use the same April deadline. By April, you decide whether you're going to assign that same neighborhood to the alternative school for a second year, whether you're gonna change the boundary or whether they can go back to their typical home school uh, because of little population fluctuations.
Good question.
And Wake County does this every year. I mean, they do this every year. They have a department just for this. Uh, and so that's how much change is going on in, in Wake County all the time. So that's why we thought it was a good one to take a peek at for their policy.
So this is Wake County's 4150?
Yes.
And this is the proposed, for Currituck County?
No, no, that is Currituck County's. Ours is less. Wake County's is kind of 4150 on steroids.
Right, but I didn't see the dates that you kept referencing. I saw the notice, I didn't see it in ours.
No, not yet. Um, when you guys decide which parts of this you think can work in a rural community that's, um, having more development, development now? Or if it's, if it's too big city and we have to do something different, then that's what we have to decide.
And then back to the 90, 95 discussion. Based on, I don't have anything in front of me right in the moment, but based on our last discussion.
Yes.
We're gonna give notice to...
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll type it out officially. We'll send it out to the board. That'll be the last draft. And if everybody goes like, "Yeah, this is what we want to send out", then we send it out to the public, we send it to the commissioners, and then everybody knows.
But we were gonna include public input?
On your policy?
I thought we were talking about that.
Yeah, I, I don't know that they, they know enough of the specifics about what you have to do to change, uh, you know, to change the assignments.
I, I think it was gonna be a permanent situation, yes.
Oh, I thought, we were talking about redrawing lines for, not just temporary. I thought the 90, 90, 95 discussion...
Yeah, we would put out for input, for public input, we would put out the actions that you're considering. I don't think the policy, um, is out there for public input because only you know the options.
No, not the policy.
Yeah, but when you say we're doing this.
The fact that we're gonna do, thinking about doing this.
Yes.
During the 90, 95 portion.
Yes.
We're gonna seek public input.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I had...
When we hit 90%, you'll make an announcement. This is triggered, da-da-da-da-da.
Yes.
When we hit 95%, you'll let the public, da-da-da-da-da.
Right, when you hit 90%, you, you give out options of what you're considering. That's what you're gonna get public input.
That's when you get the public, you get the public input.
Yes.
Then when you're doing something, you've already had the public input, right?
Right, exactly, yes. I bet you let, should they see the draft policy before you guys formalize policy.
No, sir, I, I know I was talking about two separate things, but, uh...
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Uh, summer school plan, Dr. Matt Lutz.
Can I mention one more thing?
What'd you name?
Letter B is also something else for the board to consider called temporary membership caps. Again, I mentioned that when we were talking about the alternative school as well. If you think that a school at 110% capacity is enough's enough, uh, you know, that, that's enough students in that building, then you could say, "That's the cap for any building." If you want to make it 100%, you know, whatever you want to make the cap. Then what happens is when that next student shows up, then they go to the alternative site. They automatically go to the alternative site. Uh, and so we monitor the percentages, um, just like we did in, in the chart and then, and then...
Yeah, but suppose that next student lives in North Point.
It's possible. It's possible. And again, that's where it's easier in like a Raleigh because the other school is like three blocks away. Uh, yeah, where here it's gonna be several miles in a different direction.
I'd say let's wait on that.
Okay, so, so B, B is, is less comfortable than the other ones.
I mean, in everybody else's opinion, but the other one, the 90, 95%, but I, I think if it's one, one student, maybe two, I don't know if we should implement that to, to automatically do that with that student, for the, the student who did live on the northern...
I mean, if you, uh, North Point is, what, 50 feet?
Right.
Into Virginia. And then the alternate school is Shawboro, so, yeah. Or even Central if it has to be.
But everybody, what, what is your...
I think it's a very difficult, uh, situation. Um, and unfortunately, uh, not all of them are cookie cutter by design. Uh, so I think it takes, um, some, uh, outside-the-box thinking at times. I know we have to have a basis for policy, but I still think, um, you know, at, at times you have to go with, uh, common sense and compassion to the situation. That's what I believe.
Janet? Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Said I would agree with that because you get to the point of absurdity sometimes because our northernmost residential area, which was Universal Orchard Park, we were so, we were so crowded in Moyack Elementary, they shipped those kids by bus all the way to Central Elementary School.
Yes, they did. I was a student there, eighth grade, and they were coming from Universal. Um, I, I think that if we get just one or two over, looking at the growth we've got in Moyack, it may be one or two that triggers it, but I think it's gonna be a whole lot right after.
Well, I think we should start having plans, uh, at the 90% in hopes that we can be ahead of that and be projecting that...
But just to suddenly say, "You gotta get..." Yeah, I'm not, I don't really like that. But that's just my thoughts.
So I think we will less likely find ourselves in those situations, hopefully, as we're reading the numbers and the data and, and, and watching what's coming.
Yeah, 90, 95, so...
So of the, of the two options, uh, designated alternate school site for new developments coming as the year goes on is more comfortable.
Because then we can choose that southernmost site because that's where they're gonna have to go right, right now.
Well, we may have multiple units enough to put there.
Well, and hopefully we will, then.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, summer school plan, Dr. Matt Lutz.
Okay, um, this is identical to the plan that you approved for last year. Uh, this is kind of an emergency plan, um, and that allows us to retest students on the tests that are listed here. Um, the high school did implement this last year, I remember.
Yes, we did for biology.
For, for biology. Um, we did not use this plan for the elementary or the middle schools, but by state law, we have to get it approved so that we have this option. Um, I know, Mr. Kratic, you discussed last year the break to have a more robust summer school program and so we, uh, we would like to see that as well. Fiscally, we sustain and do it well right now. We do not have those funds, but certainly something that, uh, we would love to discuss and...
I didn't see, I, I, when I looked at it on, um, on the computer, I've seen it here, but I saw, it looked like it started at, from the elementary, like fourth grade, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not gonna, if we got reading issues, be able to include different creators or...
Uh, we have a reading camp for the first, second, and third.
Okay, so that's still there?
Yes, that's still there. The state funds that.
I was just going to say, that's mandatory, isn't it?
It's, we have to and the state also funds it. And they, they do a pretty nice job on funding it.
Yeah.
Well, um, I thought it went pretty well, at least the council.
It, it's been successful. We've had some excellent teachers come in and give them...
I, I was in that, uh, but I paid attention to what I was doing in front of my book. So when you say retest, I saw some of that. Can you elaborate on that, please?
So, um, if a student does not pass the test for the three or better, they can be retested, uh, after remediation, after they go through two weeks of summer school. This, I think it's June 9th through the 26th. So once they go through that, they can then be retested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Jamie Miller, I'm surprised you're here. She, she and my daughter are expecting the same time. So I'm watching things because once you go, I'm headed to Raleigh.
Oh, eight more days, eight more days. It'll be good. So, last time we had a work session, you guys were talking about behavior concerns in our district, what other supports we could bring to our district. A question was asked about day treatment, and I had just happened to visit a day treatment center in Halifax a couple days before. So, we have met as a district mental health team since that meeting. Our district mental health team is Dr. Lutz, Renee Doughty, Virginia Arrington, who's over Student Services, Kim McClellan, who's our lead school psychologist, and Athena Chastain, who is our head social worker. And we met, and we decided that we do want to move forward with bringing a day treatment center to our district, but as a pilot program on a small scale, just to see if it works, just to see if it does what we think it would do. So I put together a little bit of information to share with you. We'd like to target our middle school, one of our middle schools, so we would have to be on board with taking kids that have behavior concerns from the other middle school and transporting them to the middle school that has the day treatment center. Day treatment is not something I was familiar with before coming to this district. So when I started last January, I was invited to plenty of meetings, and I tried to attend as much as I could just to learn, and this has just evolved and become very interesting over the last year. So, right now, in our county, we offer school-based therapy. This was started in two thousand and sixteen. We use Pride and Integrated Family Services. The guidance counselor of the school can refer a student if they think that student needs more intensive services than what the guidance department can offer. And then parents give consent before the services begin, and it allows students to see a licensed therapist without having to leave school, without having to go to an outside agency. Instead, the therapist comes to them at a time that works for the school and pulls them from class to work with them. It's available for all students, and it's at no cost to the school. And insurance determines the amount of services that each individual child can receive. So it might be once a week, it might be once a month, it might be a couple hours a week. It just depends. Right now, we have about seventy-five students across the district that access school-based therapy. That's at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And the school staff report positive results when students are given access to this therapy.
Let me ask you about the school-based therapy. So, when the student is referred, is there like a thirty day, or is this an annual thing? How often do they attend?
How long does the therapy last? It depends on what they're given with their insurance. So it could be six weeks, it could be a couple of months. They would have to meet their goals to transition out of therapy. I don't know if any of our principals want to chime in about how it works in the schools.
Sure, I mean, they, it's based on each individual child, and they meet with the families. And once Pride or Integrated Family Services starts working with them, then they work with the family. They can consult with the staff, because we have an open agreement with them, so that we can talk about how the child's doing in school, or things like that. But then they work with the family and their insurance.
More one-on-one at that point?
Absolutely. And so then they provide a course of treatment for them. And some of the kids, some kids are in for use. It just depends on what the family pays with the insurance.
I see.
What if they don't have, what if...
What if they don't have insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
So there are some options. They do take some students at a, like pro bono, for ten million students. They have so many slots that they can do that with. It also depends on the type of insurance. And so, I know Pride is, that's who services my school, they're working diligently to try to get TRICARE on there, which is the military one, because right now they're, or I could be speaking out of turn, but I don't believe that they take TRICARE at this point.
So then, if they don't take TRICARE, they probably don't pay no insurance?
It's mostly Medicaid, and for every ten students that they, that are billable, we get one student, like pro bono for free that they'll see.
They've been, they work with us to make sure our kids can take care. They can't advertise, but we tend, if we need a kid to get services, they get their services.
So this is a... Help Service Contractor?
With Pride and with Integrated Family.
Contractor, those people, the contractors.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Like a memorandum of understanding, kids.
Yes, ma'am. And so what I'm saying is, we're working with private contractors to bring this collaboration.
But we don't pay them any?
No, ma'am, they try to get it through the insurances of the family of the needed student.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to understand.
Yes, so there could be a copay?
Yes, ma'am.
To the family, if that's part of it.
So our role is identifying the children that need the higher level of care?
Okay, yes. So that's what we currently have in place. It's not EC specific, it's open to all students.
To all students.
So, at a day treatment center, there's two different kinds. There's one that's onsite, like at, located at a school, there's the offsite kind. We're looking at an onsite one that we can house in our building. That's the one that I toured in Halifax County. When I walked into the school, it wasn't just me, it was Kim McClellan and Dana Parker as well. The left side of the school was elementary, the right side of the school was middle, and they had a day treatment center for each school. And it was just very inclusive. It was very supportive. You could tell that the licensed workers that were there for day treatment were very involved with the teachers, with the staff, with the principal, and it was a community of support around the students. The way it worked is the students would attend their core classes in the mornings or in the afternoons. They wouldn't miss any of their core content instruction, and then whatever their insurance approved for them to have as far as day treatment services, they would get the other part of the day. They would go to the day treatment room. It focused on appropriate social skills, anger management, emotional regulation, coping skills, just life skills that they would need to manage their behavior better in class. It was just a very positive environment. I went from the EC aspect, looking for something to fix some of our bigger behavior concerns that we have in the EC department. This isn't going to fix that, because a lot of the therapies that they use are cognitive-based, so the child has to be able to understand it. So some of our lower functioning students that have behaviors, mainly behaviors due to communication and lack of communication skills, it's not going to be for them. If the school staff indicate that a student requires a higher level of care, then they can refer the child to the day treatment center. The licensed provider at the day treatment center will complete a clinical assessment to determine if the treatment is medically necessary. Prior authorization will be required. This will also be at no cost to the school. It would all go through insurance. We would just have to provide the classroom or the location. A child and family team meeting will take place if treatment is authorized, and the services should begin within forty-eight hours. The staff for day treatment would then become the mobile crisis for the student. So right now, if a child sees Pride or Integrated Family Services and they're in crisis, if they're having a behavior episode at school, they're called instead of mobile crisis. And that's what would happen if they, if they were at the day treatment center as well. And then each licensed provider will have a maximum caseload of six, and there's a trained paraprofessional that will also be in each classroom. So, the company that we were looking at, Getting Started Incorporated, they brought a presentation to us to show us like how they could help our district, and they provide the providers. They post it, they get, they hire, it is not on us at all.
Okay, Jamie, why the age differential there, if it's gonna be at the middle school?
Well, we just had to decide on an area to target. The high school has the PAS program. The elementary school has our PRC twenty-nine behavior support right now. And the middle school's where we're seeing a lot of our big behavior problems in the regular ENDC world. So, we just thought it would be a good place to start. And it's nothing we'd want to bring on for this year, it would be for next school year. So we have to look at the fifth graders that are gonna transition up next year as well.
Yeah, but you have five-year olds there?
To be eligible to go to day treatment, you have to be between ages five and seventeen. So they could go. If it was working, and it was providing the services that we need, and behavior was under control, we expanded it, we could go up through elementary to high school.
So, just a quick question. So we're still going to have the...
School-based?
School-based.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, ma'am, that would be a lower level of care. For a child to be eligible to receive day treatment, they have to be between five and seventeen. They must have a mental or substance abuse disorder from the Diagnostic Statistical Manual V. They cannot just have a sole diagnosis of an intellectual disability. Some common diagnosis from this manual are anxiety disorders, ADHD, ADD, bipolar, autism, operational defiant, disruptive mood dysregulation, conduct disorder. And these are very common diagnoses that we do see in our kids, especially our kids that have these behaviors that we're having a hard time helping them with. They have to have evidence that a less restrictive mental health service has been unsuccessful. That could be the school-based therapy, it could be intensive in-home therapy, could be outpatient therapy, behavior intervention plans, behavior contracts, something to show that we have done something else, and it's not, it's not working at the school level.
Suppose we have someone coming in from outside, and we immediately can identify that, would whatever was happening in, in there where they were previously, would that count as our evidence?
If they had documentation from their school system that they had something in place, I believe that it would. The individual has to exhibit behavior resulting in significant school disruption, or significant social withdrawal, or experiencing a mental health or substance abuse disorder that severely impairs their functional ability in an educational setting. So right now, just looking at our numbers, when we met with our principals and talked to our teachers, at the middle school level alone, we have about fourteen students that administrators would recommend for day treatment services. That's both middle schools combined. And then there are four rising sixth graders, kids that are currently in fifth grade, that would benefit from being referred to this as well. So to try to meet that maximum caseload of six, it seems like we're highly likely gonna be able to do that.
Would this be, would this be held at one of our middle schools?
Yes, ma'am.
One. Now, you mentioned that when you first started looking at it, that you were looking at something for some of their more severe problems, but this was not?
Well, when I first started attending meetings about day treatment, they were regional meetings, and it was looking at multiple districts coming together to have one day treatment facility. So, like Hartford, and Gates, and Camden, and Elizabeth City, we were all at the table with Trillium, with Medicaid, trying to figure out how we could provide a service, but it was just too cumbersome and too expensive. You had to have an administrator there, you had to have a general ed teacher, an EC teacher, nutrition, technology, transportation.
Right.
I'm not calling that one's a spell, transportation, or that, so. It was just, it was a lot to take on, to take your kids out of their school, to go somewhere else, and then, and they're not with their peers. So this was much more, they come to us, they're in the child's environment that they're currently in, helping them.
But would this...
Go ahead.
I still understood you to say that this would not work for some of our kids.
For, yes, for some of our more severe EC students.
So, do we have something, are we thinking of something for those children?
I'm still exploring options for them. We don't have a lot of, a lot of options in this area, and then the ones right over the border in Virginia, they're not very interested in partnering with us, because they have a plethora of business from Virginia alone.
So you mentioned six students. That's minimal?
Per, you have to have six students to have on one caseworker, licensed clinical person's caseload. So after six, they would start advertising for another person to come to our area.
Sure.
Because you don't, they can't...
One person?
One licensed person for six students, and a paraprofessional that's trained by the company. Students must be engaged, they must be active participants. They're not allowed to just go in there and act up and cuss at the people, like they have to get the kids to buy in. And that's a big part of their program, is showing the kids the reason why it benefits them and how it helps them in their life. Day treatment staff, they offer support and training to the teachers of the students, so they keep in contact with all the teachers. If the child comes in and you can see on their face, like it was a bad morning, something must have happened at home, go check in with your person, like let's get it under control, let's, let's get you the help you need. Sometimes they'll take their work there if they need it. It's not an everyday thing, but they really work as a team. It's a tier-three intervention in our MTSS process. And while a child receives day treatment, they are ineligible to receive the individual therapy, school-based therapy, or intensive in-home therapy. That would be their, their therapy group. We have some students that go to acute residential programs. So if a parent, if their child's in crisis, and they take them to a hospital and involuntarily commit them, they might go to Kemp'sville Behavior, they might go to Insight, they might do the little fourteen-day or thirty-day stint, and then they transition right back into our schools. This would be a very good step down for them to have some additional support in place while they're trying to transition back, trying to deal with the problems that they have going on. Right now, we don't have anything really in place for that, other than the meetings that we have with the family and with the parents when they're bringing that child back.
Do you receive a lot of resistance from the child, that they, that they don't want this, or is it mandatory, that they don't have a choice if the parents are working with the staff?
I think one of the reasons that day treatment is really successful is that they require child-family team meetings monthly, for the child, the parents, and the day treatment person, or they all sit down together and talk about their goals, they're working on how they're getting there, and they really make it a child-centered approach. I don't know that they get much resistance. We do get a little bit resistance with the school-based therapy sometimes. Kids don't love leading class all the time to go and work with someone, but once they establish that relationship, it really, yeah, it really helps. And to be discharged from day treatment, the student's goals must be met to show improved social, emotional, or behavioral functioning in the educational setting. So Getting Ready Incorporated is the name of the company that came to us. I just received an email from Trillium one day, and they were like, this company is interested in your post. I didn't post it, I don't know where it came from, but we just went with it, we started meeting with them, they presented to us, and it worked out really well. It was founded by a teacher.
Reading your mind.
I was like, oh, okay, so we are interested. It utilizes the whole child philosophy, of the necessity of social and emotional growth as that foundational basics for academic growth, and it encourages the right service, the right time, at the right place, to meet the mental health needs of the child in the school, in the environment that they're already in. It's immediate involvement with our MTSS team. It's serviced in the least restrictive environment, if it's onsite, as opposed to an offsite campus that the child has to go to. It supports teachers and staff, and they, they try to adhere to our current workflow. They try to jump in and do what we're doing, and not change the dynamics of the school, and not try to put their own policies in place. So, this is just the process. The referrals received, the intake coordinator assigns the licensed professional to that referral, comprehensive clinical assessment is conducted, and then the licensed professional makes contact with the family within twenty-four hours, and services are initiated to get that child help if they're eligible. This is a little bit different, because the parent can refer, the teacher can refer, the principal can refer, the counselor can refer, it doesn't have to just come straight from the guidance counselor. So there's multiple doors that can be opened. And then the positive outcome's for two thousand and eighteen, this company had a hundred and sixty students in their school-based program, and fifty-two in their offsite program. Eighty-five percent of those kids progressed enough to no longer need services within six months, and to transition back to the regular school setting with their behavior under control. And ten percent were transitioned to a higher level of care, and then five percent, they're unknown, they might have moved, or just fallen out, or... So that's what we have, so we're looking at...
Do we have an idea of, or have, has it been decided where we think that we'd like to house which middle school?
I think Currituck Middle would make the most sense, for if we have a student that's located down by the bridge, to have to take them all the way to Moyac Middle. If it's not required, it doesn't seem like we should make that decision. Has that been finalized? I mean, we've met with administrators, talked to administrators, but...
Well, we're gonna have to look at space, we're looking at capacity numbers, and Moyac Middle's tight, so that comes into play, looking at where the greatest need currently is. So, right now, we do believe Currituck Middle would be the best location for that school-based therapy, or the...
And it would be easy to expand to the high school level next, to go out and reach the kids in the CCLC, or the separate Saturday classroom out there, if the need is there, which it is there, and it's accessible.
Looks good.
Thank you, thank you.
It does, it looks too good to be true.
Jamie's been, I want to make sure she gets, she's been great and really tackled this problem.
I can see that, she's put a lot of time and work in it, yeah.
It's been great, because this is an issue that we've been grappling with for years, and so, and so, great work. In a middle school, having spent extensive time there in my career, it's a great place to start. It's a, it's your, it's a great place to get these behaviors on track, and we really like their data.
Yeah.
That, that's impressive stuff, so.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt.
The great founders are, as a result of your Google searches, or listening to your conversations on your phone, man. That's some good marketing, innit?
Yes. All right. Local unit contract, who does tend to define?
Thank you, Ms. Sefrich. We've got a contract for, for local units. I'm gonna hammer up the discussion to Mr. Mullins and Renee Doughty, because they have some information from the county commissioner meeting that they attended. And regardless of, this is gonna sound bad, but regardless of where the money comes from, we, we need to act on the contract.
Right.
So we can have time to make sure that we can get things taken care of over the summer. Then we can get, then we can get a deck of cards, and then play poker with the commissioners and see, you know, who pays for what. You know, right now, we have a commitment for, you know, half payment from the commissioners, and the other half payment will come from the school district, but I'll hand it off to Matt, who can give the rest of the specifics about the...
Shake it off, and I don't want that.
That's basically, in a nutshell, no need to go through the long spiel of how the meeting went, but it all boiled down to the last comment, the last vote was, they are willing to pay half, as long as we do the five-year plan and pay it over five years. as long as we do the five-year plan and pay it over five years. They don't want to pay half of a lump sum and we really don't want to take that kind of money out of our, our program either. So they said if we were willing to do the five-year lease-to-own process, they would pay half of it.
That only makes sense, the lease-to-own.
So it'd be, it'd be around twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars each half.
Each half, roughly twenty-five, yeah.
But in the meantime, we're still gonna ask for more.
Were all the commissioners present at that meeting?
Yes.
All of them?
Uh, as far as I can remember, yeah.
No, Bob wasn't there.
Yeah, Bob wasn't there, yeah.
What a thought. Okay. Just wanted to point that out. I'm saying it will be a game changer.
It'd be nice if it was because Ben's comment to rehash the meeting was, we would absolutely help you out. It will be part of your one-point-four request that you gave yearly. I'm like, wait a minute. That's not going to happen.
It started out with us using our own, our own funds. Then it's, then it went to, well, we'd be glad to help you if you go ahead and absorb it in your one-point-four. And then a couple, a couple of commissioners jumped in and said that they would help. Well, I think it's only fair that we do half. And then another jumped in and said, well, yeah, I think we could do half, but let's do it in the five-year plan.
Were they all in agreement?
The ones that were present.
The ones that were present were in agreement on what I said first.
Six.
Yeah, none of, Ben, Ben was the only one that made the comment, we'll take it out of your capital outlay, you know, allotment.
Well, that's his job. His job is to save money for the county.
I mean, they're kinda having a hard time right now with some of their capital projects, not making excuses, but I'm gonna say this, still should have cooked me with you.
Thank you very much. All right, any more discussion concerning the.
Again, to reiterate that, the recommendation at tonight's meeting is the five-year plan. You approve it, then it goes over then to their approval and then we can discuss.
Yeah, let's, let's keep the, finger point now, let's just get the trailers and get it moving. And if it comes out of local fund balance or it comes out of local appropriations or it comes out of local capital, really, I mean, that's where it comes from. So the state's not gonna pay for it to the people that don't understand that. And the federal government is certainly not gonna pay for it. So it really doesn't matter if it takes, get ahead of it.
Any other discussion?
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
One, you know, last year, speaking of funding, we talked about maybe adjusting the funding formula.
Yeah.
And haven't talked about it anymore really officially. So, you know, I think last year we were told, let's just go on with our current formula and we'll give you a little extra money for capital improvements and we'll revisit it next year. So it's, I think we need to make plans to revisit it.
Yes.
Based on the meeting that we had, just on that comment, I'll say that, that came up where, oh, and well, when Ben said, let's go ahead and use your fund balance money because things are getting tight all over. Oh, and Etheridge said, yeah, it doesn't matter if you use your fund balance money or our fund balance money or, or our money. We're all on one team and if you need something extra, you can come see us.
Yeah.
The next comment out of Ben's mouth and, and like Mr. Prudential said, everybody's looking out for the budget. He said, if we have it.
Right.
So.
Well, I just know last year we did talk about that and.
We did and they asked us to use our fund balance. And we've got it down now where we, we basically are working on the bare minimum. And so I think there comes a time when we need to make some decisions and change that funding formula. And I think that time is now. We've been talking about it and talking about it. And I think when we go back to the commissioners prior to our joint meeting, we need to have our ducks in a row and ask for a certain adjustment to that fund balance and have that ready to go ahead of time. Let's find out what that number is, what we need to ask for and go ahead and implement it and put it in place.
Rather than the consumer price index calculation, didn't they raise that up to three percent even though it was lower?
Correct.
Two percent.
Two, two percent's the.
It's not three percent.
Well, they increased it to higher than what it was. Look, the whole, the whole formula, in my opinion, is messed up because they're using the consumer price index. Okay? Doesn't use rise and fall, cost of natural fuel, coal, diesel fuel, electricity and all the things that we use.
Two-point-four.
It's, 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 it's wrong. So really, I think, in my opinion, what we should be doing is, we should be deciding between the two boards and the community in some fashion, what level of services that we were likely to provide. What, where, where do we wanna be? What level of service do we wanna provide? And we figure out a framework as to how to do that. That's when we say it costs this much because you don't know how much it costs until you, you know what level of service. And when you identify, and can get as close as you can with what it costs, that's how you determine how much you're gonna ask them for, so you can paint the whole picture. You give them the information from fifteen to twenty years ago as to why they're in the situation they're in, why we're in, what we're in. You paint the full, full picture from the past. You give the future. The projection is to where are you trying to go and what you're trying to maintain. That's my suggestion. That's how you, that's how you negotiate that deal. That's how you do it. Can't just go in there and ask them for a sum of money and they don't understand what you're planning on doing.
Well, you're working on the budget, correct? Because they want that by May fifteenth. So that should give us an inkling as to what we need to do is.
And how is that working out that we're giving them a budget that they like? Cause they didn't like ours. I mean, they didn't like our format.
Right, right, you know, right now, the RIS staff, they're, they're just crunching for numbers. And we've gotta check, our attorney said, make sure that we're maintaining the mandates of state law. That you can't revise the budget too much, otherwise it won't meet the uniform, uniform budget code.
Short account.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, if we, if we revise it, we've gotta clear it with somebody at the State Department, make sure that that's an approved revision to the format.
Okay. Are we also taking into consideration what was recommended by our recent audit? And I don't know that you appear with the Evergreen Report, but they, they recommended a certain amount of money in our fund balance. So we need to.
That would, that's a good idea to reference that.
Because they're the ones that asked for it.
Yes, that's the.
They also referenced getting away from the computer, consumer price index as well.
Yeah.
They also referenced some other things that we probably didn't wanna swallow up here. But just because they referenced all that, I mean, I'm not even sure that we really had a real understanding of. They didn't reference, they didn't identify what level of service we were providing. They didn't identify, should we just provide a better service, a lesser service? None of that was part of the discussion. So I want you to understand, do we need more teacher days? Do we need more instructional material? Do we need more of this? Do we need more of that? That's how you determine what level of service you're providing.
Need a line.
Then you get a cost.
Perhaps we need to do a sub-bag as to what we need.
No, you gotta get, you gotta identify what level of service you want. And you build a plan.
We know what services, what level.
What service? Which one?
Absolutely want it all. We want the best.
Well, do you think we have it now?
No, not.
Okay. So we gotta identify as to how and what level of service we want, how we're gonna get there. Then that tells you how much it's gonna cost. Simple economics.
Yeah, but we've done, we've done that. We, we have. We've done that and we've been shot down at every turn. We tried to do that, Bill, explain to them.
You know, two thousand three, we had the highest level of student achievement ever in Curry Tech history and we were one of the top three school districts in the state.
We had the funding.
And starting in two thousand five to present, we were made to cut one-point-seven million dollars worth of positions just so we could make our budget in this meeting.
Agreed, but that's part of the fifteen years going back, painting the whole picture. Because there's gonna be some data in there in addition to that, that some of these people don't even understand as to how it impacted the municipal fund, which they work with, that pays out their departments, and you're gonna get a clearer picture. And so, yes, I agree with you with that, but that, just saying that broadly and getting them to swallow that whole apple when we're trying to get them to take a few bites at a time, we gotta make the whole picture. We gotta give it a little bit more detail. We gotta tell them exactly. Then we gotta take them around and we gotta take them on a capital tour. Because they know their capital's not the greatest, so then we need to show them some of what we got going on. And I'm not trying to cast any of, of blame on your, or your staff.
No.
What I'm saying is, we need to show them this stuff.
We made it clear at the meeting the other night when they told us that they would like, we're absorbing the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year for the activity classes already. And then when they said we needed to absorb another fifty thousand, Renee and I both said, well, Renee said right off the bat, that's not helping us. So, I mean, what, what we have is already being stretched too thin and then they wanted us to stretch it even further.
That's why, for multiple reasons, and I want people to understand it's not just them. We lost a rule count in funding. The state took that away, the state did other cuts. And then we opened schools, like Bill alluded in two thousand eight, almost a perfect storm.
Yeah.
They lost money from their municipal fund, general fund, when the occupancy tax went out in two thousand six. All this stuff happened relatively close together. Those are reasons to why we don't have the monies to be able to do some of the things we wanna do.
The state expects counties that are in good financial standings to support their schools.
Yes.
And our county is in good financial standings. You know, we've had a couple of situations, you know, like with the Genalocks where they were behind us to protect their children, but we had to take that money.
Not when it was, not when it came down to the.
The pay in it, fifty thousand dollars, the accreditation. They, they support us with that. Have we got any information or clarification on that, Mr. Stepanik?
I have not. We're waiting for, and I, I'm assuming that's something to do with election day or a primary day. But we're waiting for a meeting to be scheduled between Ms. Etheridge, Mr. White, Mr. Steigluder and myself.
Yeah, see, they say they support us, but when I think of someone supporting me, I think they're supporting me a hundred percent, including a fiscal.
Financial.
Um, support. So when someone says, yeah, we support you, we, we're with you all the way. And then when it comes to writing the check, there nowhere to be found, but they're supporting us. You know, that doesn't help me. I could support my kids all day long. I wish you well. I hope you go to college. Good luck with that. But I'm not writing the check. That doesn't work.
There's a majority of them gonna, gonna support that. Don't you worry.
Well, we do need to get clarification on that.
And then on a side note, since it was a primary election, nobody's platform mentioned the state budget. Did anybody hear any controversy? I mean, there was controversy a little bit, but it wasn't a platform issue with any of our candidates.
No.
Why?
The whole Medicaid expansion.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Well.
I mean, that's true.
They need to work together.
I mean, if you look at the budget outside of that for our school system, what's in there currently, I think you'd be pretty pleased. You know, locally, there's a lot of money coming all the way.
The bottom line is we don't have a budget.
I know this.
And they all need to be working together.
You can't blame that just on the one or two representatives.
So get party lines, work together, work it out, get a budget, pass it and be done with it. Or clean house.
They're not gonna, the, 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 one party's not gonna expand Medicaid. The other party wants to.
Okay, but, so you're at a standstill for how long?
I agree.
And you're gonna leave everybody else in limbo?
I agree.
While you, cause you can't agree? I don't understand that. In life, you have to come to terms. It's a give and take.
I think it's terribly irresponsible. I think they ought to have some kind of law in place that if it can't be agreed upon, it's something else. I'm not making excuses for that. I'm just telling you what's really holding up.
Can you tell us what it's going to mean to us by not having a budget? How are we, and I know it means we can't expand anything, but can you give us specifics on what, how it's hurting us?
I will still get an initial allotment that will be based on the eighteen-nineteen budget. So the only increases that we would see would be because of our ADM increase, if we, if we have an ADM increase. So we would see a few more teachers, a few more supplies, materials money, a few more of, of bits and pieces of the actual budget. But we still won't see increases anywhere else.
We'll get those because we're gonna get more students, so that means.
That's right.
So it costs us more.
So basically what the state is doing is they're going back and looking at the eighteen-nineteen budget, say it was five billion. Everybody gets that in nineteen-twenty divvied up depending on how many kids they have. And then that five billion also next year is gonna be divvied up. Whereas if we wouldn't have passed the budget, I don't know what the numbers are, but we would have, we would have more money in other places.
So we may never get the additional money.
We're not getting it this year. We know that. Teachers aren't getting raises this year. I, I don't expect a budget next year. I don't expect to get two raises next year, but I'm still gonna put them in the budget.
What do you mean next year?
I don't expect them to, to have a budget ratified next year.
There was, there was a.
For July?
We, right. There was a, there was a comment made by the president of the senate and, and it's hard to know whether it was, it was campaign rhetoric or whether it was legitimate. He said, don't be surprised if we don't have a budget for the whole biennium.
Yes.
And so then that means next year we'll be running the ninth, the twenty-twenty-one school year off of the eighteen-nineteen budget.
Well, I agree a lot with my room to make a.
I agree. So you're not gonna concede either. You're gonna stay up there until you do what you're supposed to.
Because they're not gonna do that, we're left to this. Either you gotta knock off a few Republicans or you gotta knock off a few Democrats.
Well, what have, what have we done? What have we done as a school system and ladies and now?
In, in the age of school safety, we say vote him out.
Thank you, thank you, our hostess.
For the video, our video.
Say that a lot better.
Leave me uncomfortable.
Okay.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna change that?
No, I'm saying they got no members, something's gonna happen if you wanted to change.
So, so that bottom line is any increases or decreases that we would see would be based on how many students we, we acquire or lose. And then fines and forfeitures. I, um, IT depends greatly on the fines and forfeitures. So we could see some movement in that, but probably not a lot.
Wow, okay.
Where's that, oh, I should, was brought against the state, where the fines and forfeitures?
That's still.
Is that the Leandro?
It's still going.
No.
How is this different? It's already been decided. What they're, what they're doing now is they're trying to decide terms for repayment.
Well, they got all that money from last year, so they didn't want to give it to us.
Well, but that's what they're saying. There's no way that in any one budget year they could pay it back at a massive amount. So now, yeah, so now they're talking about, you know, some kind of terms on how they're gonna pay it back. They haven't received an update for a year and a while and that, so they must still be just brainstorming how to get it done.
I don't ever remember this happening before.
Not this long.
I don't know how, well, and again, it's for way above me, but like how there aren't lawsuits happening on behalf of us who are relying on those funds to those.
We probably.
Well, I would talk to any on behalf of the students, which are the end users of the system. And their education is negatively impacted as a result of this mayhem.
There, well, and it goes back to, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say Lenovo, but that's a computer. So, Leandro, the Leandro, I mean, that's what that was, that, that there wasn't, you know, equitable resources given to educate the students across the entire state. And I believe most states, and I think this is one of them, that, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, you have to have a budget, you know, and it's in law. It has to be approved, so you have money for the next fiscal year. But when the lawmakers are the ones not meeting their own deadline, that's what the Leandro, cause Leandro's gotta be two decades old. How do you hold the lawmakers accountable, you know, to follow their own laws? And that's, that, and it's the same thing with the budget. It's there. It's in black and white. Some, some legislature at some point put it in there that you have to have a budget done. But they just, they don't, there's no consequence basically for that. And this isn't the only state. Many states have multiple decade-old, old school financing lawsuits that were decided in favor of the schools. But getting the, the processes to change is not a quick.
So, so also, I just basically say, now would be a great time to have a nice fund balance if you don't.
Yeah.
So next year, you're gonna hear me saying no. I mean, I've said yes to as much as I can, but next year I, I'm not gonna be able to say yes because we have no fund balance anyway.
And again, going back to, it's, it's not, it's not the county commissioner's fault. But if you have a, an economically stable county, some other counties are putting in extra funds to fill some of the gaps that are made by the state decisions. And we haven't found that to be a tradition here. You know, and I go back to the rural funding, the small school funding, when that disappeared, I believe there was a comment made that that's a state program. It's not our job to fill the holes made by the state. So that's, that's something that needs to be discussed for the future because if this continues to happen, you know, we're gonna be operating on a two-year-old budget next year trying to make things.
Now, I do believe that the intent, when it goes away, is that the locale takes more. And it might not offset the whole cost.
Right.
But the intent is there. Now, is, is that black and white somewhere in that book? Probably not. But we're talking about this happening thirteen years ago, two thousand six, was it? So it took a while, not that it didn't have impact, but now you're seeing it of an cumulative effect. In addition to these other strains, so you've seen all these strains now and, and as the picture. these strains now. And, and that's the picture I'm talking about painting, so that you have the ability to have the conversation other than just saying, we're broke.
Well, at, at one point, we had how much of the fund balance, Bill? Was it eight million?
We had like three and a half.
Three and a half is the highest, since I've been.
Could've bought a pool.
Three and a half is the highest since you've been on.
Sorry.
I bet it's been higher.
If you may have. Well, let me ask you this, do you think it would be a good idea to invite some of the commissioners here and have an open discussion?
I think it'd be better off to have a few individuals meet with a few of them, have a few discussions, give a few, uh, opinions, and then have an open discussion. That way, um, we can actually.
I think Marissa brings a lot to the table with her.
Oh, I think she makes a great, great point.
The numbers, she, she knows her numbers, so I, I would like to have her involved in the discussion.
In the beginning of discussions.
Yeah. Um, and.
I've been talking about fund balance, let's see. My son's only in the ninth grade, he was coming out of kindergarten, okay? Been talking about funding formula, fund balance. A long time. Fund formula.
Yeah, I think instead of, last week, we had worked well.
Yeah.
Where we were, you know, having that joint meeting, and it wasn't the whole war, it wasn't the whole, I just think, it was our whole war, but it was only.
A few of them.
The commissioners. I mean, I think inviting them back to those kind of discussions, once we get some preliminary planning on our end with the budget and staffing needs and all of that. Cause I do think we have to be specific and say, we need these positions because we expect this quality of service for our students.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And our current budget, because there isn't really a budget, won't do that.
And I also think that just because someone like myself moved here in oh-six, might have been used to something somewhere else, isn't reason enough to substantiate that argument. What I mean is, we have to bring the data and bring where we were, like you mentioned, Bill, and then how we would like to be back there, if not better. I doubt we can get there very quickly. However. We haven't explained why we were there.
We talked to them about that, about our fund balance, and we were told to spin our fund balance down to, to zero.
And they take care of us, but we have to get permission for everything.
When you grow things, it's us.
It's almost like they want us to have to come to them for everything.
Well, and then when you do that, it's like.
It, we're nickel and diming them to that.
And, and they have the say over how our system's being run.
They have, they have to entrust us to make the right decisions.
Well, I think we should have some small meetings and understand the sacrifices and struggles that they're facing, the sacrifices and struggles that we're facing, how we've collectively gotten here, and how we plan on moving forward.
Bill, I would love to know, the year you were talking about, where we were number three in the state?
Two thousand and three.
Okay. I, I'd love to know what our teacher assistant formula was then. If anybody can find that out? Because I know teacher assistants are very valuable in those primary classrooms, with teaching our children to read, you know?
Well, two thousand and three was my best year ever in the real estate industry. So everybody was flying high. Money was no problem back in two thousand and three, and that coincides with the school system. We probably had.
Are you looking for it?
She hasn't.
I just realized she's over there.
So many assistants.
I have it, I just don't have it with me.
Yeah.
But I didn't.
I mean, I was looking, I know I was teaching fourth grade, so I, I don't think fourth grade had teacher assistants.
Well, I, I was first and second.
I agree with you on the teacher's aid.
Twenty-six years ago, I, they, we had teacher assistants at my, I call it elementary, for fourth, fifth, and sixth. I was assigned, or did a substitute, and I had seven teachers I worked with. I mean.
Like, it was like an hour, yeah, hour and a half.
Still, I, some of them, I learned to do running records from one of them. I learned, um, to, did typewriters, I mean, it was before computers. So, you know, but I learned valuable stuff in that hour to help those students. And then, we had full-day kindergarten back then, which, and I, at least first and second, I think had half-day each. There was a building that was put forth before the, um, last year that was knocked down really quick to put teacher assistants back in on K-three classrooms.
You usually come to all of our meetings. Would you see if you could bring that data to us?
I can, I can, I have it. I can get it to you before that. I have it in my paperwork.
Okay.
And now, we have some second-grade classrooms, I believe, that do not have any teacher assistant time.
They don't, they don't have.
You know, that, that, that hurt, that hurt their children. It does. It did. You know, you have another person in the room, two people to help meet the needs of those students.
You know, Janet utilized correctly, then we can put instructional coaches in the schools as well, then the head can support some of that other work, well, the teachers working with the instructional coach to fine-tune their teaching. And we've also pulled the instructional coaches out of the buildings as well. And that was on our presentation with the commissioners. That was up there.
Is that the one that coordinators also, is that the presentation you named?
Yeah, instructional coaches were one of the first things that went.
And we've had curriculum coordinators in every school, too.
Some of that stuff has to be, with all due respect. Before I got here, I didn't know what an instructional coach was. They don't know what an instructional.
No, you have to show the correlation between student achievement. I hear what you're saying, but.
That's part of the, the picture I'm talking about and refining it.
We have to, yeah, I see what you're saying.
And all I'm saying is, we have to put it into terms that everybody understands. And I don't think they're necessarily saying, I, I could be mistaken with the budget. I don't think they're expecting you to present it to the state indifferent than you do. I think when you present it to them, they wanna have a little bit more understanding and a little bit more user-friendly for their interpretation. I think that's what they're asking for, so that you can, uh, cause it is very, uh, difficult. I don't know if many of you guys have, uh, read through it from front to back, but you got this big, uh, uh, uniform chart of uniform accounts, if that's what it's called, a uniform chart of accounts. And then you got this, and you got a little number to suit, you got what, you gotta figure out what that number means, you gotta go back.
It's not user-friendly.
Oh, it is very challenging.
All right, any further discussion?
Just Matt, will you give us the update on the greenhouse?
Okay.
Uh, the, the structure is up, it looks like an air grab hang.
Awesome.
It's, it's, it's coming along. The, uh, the structure's up, they're talking, structure and size done by next Wednesday, electrical and plumbing interior wise, starting Wednesday, Thursday. My electricians from, that I hired to, to run power to the greenhouse, ran power, set a, had set a panel today, and, uh, it's coming along.
Very good.
DTA?
What's that?
DTA, your local commission?
For your cake or the.
That kinda connected together, I'll get to that.
Three, four weeks, tops.
Thank you.
Can we get a, can we get a date for, uh?
You're so far in now, you might have to do two cases.
The, the, well, the, uh, the drill rig is ordered. It looks, and usually after it's ordered, it's seven days out. And then after the, the samples are done, it's, if I'm not mistaken, two, three, two to three weeks to get analysis results. So it's, it's a process, but we're looking at probably drilling next week if we agree. Uh, I sent you an email later on today while you were in the meeting. He was, he showed me the sites that